Next item.
Under Operations, Demography Study Report. As part of the strategic plan focusing on the alignment of resources and infrastructure, the Board of Education approved RSP and Associates to conduct a demography study to assist the district in making long-term decisions. During the 2018-19 school year, RSP and Associates conducted the study by analyzing enrollment data, visiting school buildings, and reviewing community demographic trends. The study focused on two components, demographic and enrollment analysis and functional building utilization study. Tonight's presentation will provide the Board a district-level overview of the report. Rob Schwartz, CEO of RSP and Associates, will be present tonight to present the information and answer questions.
All right, well, good evening, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, members of the Board. In October of 2018, you provided approval for RSP and Associates to conduct a demography study for our school district. Tonight, we have with us Rob Schwartz, who is the CEO of RSP and Associates, and they have been busy doing a lot of research and background work for us over the last year. He'll be able to provide you a district-level overview of this information. At the end of this presentation, we'll talk a little bit about kind of current considerations and things that we have in place, as well as talk a little bit about next steps. I will say that this presentation is, will provide a nice segue for what Susan Willis will bring you with the budget report, so think of us as her opening act. I was trying to come up with some cool bad name or something, but I don't know, outside of Wham, and I guess you can play George Michael. It will be all right. But, well, and you said, so we're the warming or the opening act for the incomparable Susan Willis, as you named her. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Rob, and he'll walk you through.
Great, good evening, Board, Dr. Thompson. Initially, when Fabian came to me, he said, hey, you're going to present on March 9th. And so, we said, hey, we got 300 slides. And he said, that's too many. So, we lowered it to about 110. And he said, Rob, you only have about an hour, and thank you to your team. We got it down to these 60-some slides, so we're going to be within our hour constraint that we have here. So, the way we've broken this down is really in two components. We have the enrollment analysis, and then we have the building utilization. So, we'll talk about it in that regard. For those that are tuning into this, the next couple of slides will help them understand who we are. And so, here's a visual of some of the work that we do through the Midwest. You've already had my introduction. There were a lot of our other team members that were involved with the analysis, the building tours, and so really a shout-out to them. This is really a collective of all of our abilities to provide you this information this evening. Along with my team, there's a lot of other people here in your community that have provided information to our analysis. And so, this slide helps illustrate a short list, but a very comprehensive list of those entities that provided us data or input into what is happening in your community. So, I want to thank them here publicly. As we start at this 100,000-foot view, there's some key considerations that you have to look at. So, with the enrollment analysis, what we've projected is that you would have a decrease in your enrollments. However, there's going to be an increase at the high school level. There'll be a stabilization at the middle school, but then towards the end of the projection period, it drops off. And elementary will be lower than what it is currently when we get out to 23, 24. The other element that we wanted you to understand at this 100,000-foot view is what I would call transiguency or migration. There's quite a bit of that, and some of it's captured by moving out of the district. Some of it's captured by choosing different services not provided by USD 259. So, we've tried to capture that with everything that we look at in your district to understand if those trends continue, what does this mean for your community? One thing that has changed since we finished this study, there was no knowledge of what was going to happen with the Boeing Air Max and what impact that would have with Spirit right here in your community. So, some of the things, much like demographics with your economic indicators, they're changing as we become aware of what's happening in your community. So, keep that on the back burner of some of the things that you see with the opportunities for enrollment change. The last component at this 100,000-foot view is with developments. So, we know the bulk of your development that will happen in your community that's new is going to be in Bel Air, Kechai, or down on the southeast side by the high school in the city limits of Wichita. We also know there'll be some projects that happen that are infill projects within your community, but the bulk of your residential is already built, and that's where we're going to be focusing on, because that's where we see the demographic shifts. That's where we see some of the changes that are impacting what you see for enrollment at any of the buildings. So, some of the visuals for people to come back to, we'll show the district boundary on this slide. Solid colors represent the city limits. We also broke the district down by the existing high school attendance area, represented by each color for those boundaries. Same thing for the middle school attendance areas, and then also the elementary school attendance areas. We further break the district into what we call planning areas. We have about 1,100 of them. And in those 1,100 planning areas, we're focusing on the type of development that it is. So, is it single-family apartments, mobile homes, twin homes, duplexes? But what's happening specifically with enrollments, demographics, and developments? They all have something different happening. We're trying to capture what a yield rate would be, what its subdivision lifecycle is. So, is it going to re-green, have more students? Is it going to gray, have fewer students? As we look a little bit tighter into what that means, this visual provides you some of that information, the GIS information. So, parcels, streets, the green line represents the planning areas, and the dots represent students receiving services in 1819 from USD 259. The larger the dots, the greater the grade the student is in. The smaller the dot, closer to kindergarten. If you look, some of these dots have multiple dots, because some of these households have multiple children at different grades. All of this information goes into a sophisticated forecast model, so this is not just looking at trend data. This is a regression model to try to understand these 1,100 planning areas, what is changing in them? And can we continue to see similar yield rates as what we've seen in the past, what we're currently seeing, and what does that mean moving forward into the future? Some of the other data sets that we look at that are integrated into what happens in each of these 1,100 planning areas is covered by some of the information you see on these bullet point lists. So, we'll look at different census data sets. We'll look at some of the information that the cities have with their land use plans, their comprehensive plans, their capital infrastructure plans, to understand where things are changing and where we might see not only new things, but where do we see the infill opportunities? So, when we started out trying to understand your district, we have to understand who's the typical citizen that's moving into your community. So, within your district boundary, if we go back to those maps, the purple line. And so, with census data, it's indicating that we've been seeing more people move into your community. And so, you see that broke down from 2000, 2010, 2010 to 2018, and then 2018 to 2023, what they're thinking that future population might be in your community. We also look at housing, trying to understand, do we have the appropriate amount of housing for the people that are moving into your community? Affordable, that's another question for a later day, but we do know that just looking at what inventory's been coming online, it's keeping pace with what we would reasonably see with a population increase to your jurisdiction of USD 259. We also provide income with census data indicating that it's going to increase. And then, your largest workforce is the services sector of about almost 38%. So, again, who are the people that live in your community? Another way that we look at this information is showcased here in these two tables, and we're showing you it in different ways. So, we have the boundary for Wichita Public Schools. We're showing one of your adjacent districts, Derby. We have Kansas City, Kansas, another urban-type district, and then the City of Wichita, Sedgwick County, and the State of Kansas. We wanted you to get a sense of how there's some similarities, but there's also some differences in the type of people that are within your jurisdiction, and even comparing that to the City of Wichita. Similar, but there are some differences. And so, we show you some different things with rental rates, ethnicity, and so on.
And again, that's the population of people that live in Wichita. That's not the students. Our student demographics look different. This is just the type of person that lives in, within the city limits or within our boundaries.
And a great example of this is when we look at the ethnicity. Here, it would show within the boundary of USD 259 that we'd have about 19% Hispanic. When we look at the student data that we have from 1819, that was more like 34%. So, we're serving a greater difference of ethnicity than what we see for the total population of USD 259. It's a great point to bring up. Some other things that we wanted you to understand with our data is what the enrollment data is versus what it is not. So, when Susan gives her report, her focus is on FTE. So, how do you utilize the dollars that are received from the district? Ours is more of a head count, and all of the enrollment that we have, we've categorized it whether it's magnet or not magnets. But what's not in our numbers would be the preschool students and the e-school students. Those are the two biggest pots that are not in there. The other thing is when we get into FTE, that gets into the .1, .2 allocation for students where ours is, if that's one student, they may be coming for math for one hour, that's one student for us. So, there are some differences. So, as we look a little bit into some of this past data, I have two tables here, and the top table shows you by grade the number of students from 2014-15 through 1819. And one thing that stands out in that top table, when we're looking at this demographically to understand what will happen with your enrollment, if we look at the previous-year senior class, so for 1718, we can see that it's 2,885 students. When we look at the incoming kindergarten class for 1819, it was 3,756. So, that would be one indicator where we'd say, wow, you're going to grow by a whole lot of kids, just by that small departing senior class, large incoming kindergarten class. Well, that's not the entire story for your district, and that's why we show you that same data, but as the students cohort forward, so as they go from kindergarten to first or fifth to sixth. And so, with that second table, the bottom two rows, we're showing you a three-year average and a three-year weighted average. The three-year weighted average puts the greatest influence of change on the most current year, but this helps capture what we're seeing for enrollment change grade to grade. And you can see that we have several grades where there's quite a bit of decrease, and you see some other grades where we might have a little bit of an increase. And so, the largest decrease, cohort decrease, is from fifth to sixth grade. You can see that that's continually been happening. That's not a new trend. You can see that in every one of the years that we're showing on this particular table, and that's averaged about 230 students. So, these decreases are offsetting the small senior class graduating and the large incoming kindergarten class coming into the system. So, again, this is just that 100,000-foot view. So, as we look a little more into some of this change, we've provided you two different maps to help illustrate this transiguency or this migration. So, this first map is the in-migration. So, these are students that would be new to the district in the year in which we're looking at what that change was. So, we've provided you three benchmark years for the years we've done studies for your district. So, that would be 2010, 11, 15, 16, and then 1819. One thing that stands out is looking at those three years, we still have a lot of new kids into the district, over 3,000 students, but it's less than what we saw in those other two years. So, fewer new students into the district. The map illustrates where those kiddos are, and the color represents whether they're elementary, which is red, blue is middle school, green is high school. If we zoomed in even tighter, because your district is quite large, you would see that there's multiple students at different grade levels in similar households. But again, this gives you the visual of where they are in the district. So, we also then looked at the other side of migration, the out-migration. So, who the previous year was receiving services, but then in the next year, no longer receiving services. So, they may have moved out of the district, or they may be choosing a different choice of private, parochial, or homeschool. Again, a similar trend of what we're seeing with the data is we gladly saw fewer students leave the districts, or our out-migration of students was about 3,600. And in those other previous two years, we had near 4,800 and 4,700 students, but because we had fewer new students, we're still having a migration that's a negative, but less than what we saw in those other two years. Again, the dots on the map representing where we're seeing those kiddos that were receiving services but no longer receiving them. Another way that we look at what's happening in your district, because of these 1,100 planning areas, we can understand where it's increasing and where it's decreasing. So, on this map, the green areas represent a decrease from what the enrollment in those planning areas were five years ago, whereas the orange areas represent an increase. The darker the green, the greater the decrease. The darker the orange, or brighter the orange is, the greater the increase occurred from that snapshot view of five years ago. Again, this is just to give you a sense of where we're seeing some of that enrollment change. Another way to look at this is through this heat map, and if technology works, I'll be able to play this. If not, what you're seeing on this particular slide is a density of the students. So, where we see the red areas, that's where we have the greatest density of students, and this is the K5 enrollments. And so, what we're really trying to understand here is where are the kids, and what is that in proximity to where these facilities are, and how may that impact on what we see for a future enrollment projection? So, some of the greatest dense areas on the northwest side was around Irving Elementary, on the northeast side, near Mueller, and on the southwest side, near Kelly Liberal Arts, and then on the southeast side, near Allen Elementary. So, where we see the greatest red areas, that's where, if you're familiar with where the schools are, that's where we're seeing the greatest density. Each of these conclusions, you've heard me talk about, is essence of number of planning areas, what we're seeing with migration, what grades we're seeing the greatest increase or decrease at. And this is always evolving, changing based on some of the dynamic things that occur with your housing product and the economic indicators of your community. So, some other benchmarks that we try to look at to understand what's happening with your population is showcased in this graphic. So, the green line represents the census population estimate. So, for your community, it's indicating that we are having more people move into your community. It's above zero. The blue line represents the certificate of occupancies, so when we have units come online and available for households to move in, and you can see that we have activity happening, but it's less than what we had here two years ago. The red line represents what the enrollment change has been for the K12 enrollments, and you can see that it's oscillated, and it doesn't necessarily follow the trend of population increase to your community, doesn't follow that you have new building activity. Both of those factors would say, hey, we should have more students. So, there's other demographics at play, and we've tried to showcase that with the enrollment tables, with what we're seeing for migration. If we forwarded this now, since our study ended in 1819, and you look at 1920, we'd see the building activity very similar to what we saw last year. We'd still show population increasing, but your enrollment decreased. So, some of this gets into what's happening with the choices of the millennials, how many children are they having, how long they might be waiting, what's happening with the live birth data. So, all of these things, we've kind of factored into what will happen with our projections. So, if we get to the last bit of the development portion of your analysis, what we're showing on this map is where we potentially will see current activity, so residential activity. Those are represented with the green areas. The yellow areas would be areas that maybe could happen within the next five years. The purple is where it's likely beyond five years, maybe closer to 10 years. What we're seeing on this map is some of these areas, they may not develop, and it may be simply stated, the person who owns the land, you may know them, and they may say, hey, we're not going to develop until we're dead, so over my dead body, right? And so, you see me having it develop. I'm not saying that person's going to die. What I'm saying is, they may be close to infrastructure, they may be close to some things that we need to factor in that would happen with developments. So, on this particular table, that kind of coincides with the map, these would be the shovel-ready projects, the way you would look at this. And so, we're showing you what the development is. We're telling you what the existing units are. Then, as you continue to move to the right, potential units. And then, you can see the last five columns, the units that were built in each of those developments each of those years. So, that would be the certificate of occupancies. So, again, giving you an idea, if you go with the potential units, you go all the way down to the bottom, we still have with some of these developments over 2,500 units that could be built. And as I've indicated to administration, if you zoom out, the City of Wichita is in other districts. There's other building activity happening. All of these 2,500 units aren't just going to get built immediately. And you kind of see that with the table that we're showing you by year, that we're averaging about 200 units a year. So, again, with the development conclusions that you could see on the map and with these tables, the bulk of that's going to be in the Kechai-Bel area or down by Southeast High School, in the city limits of Wichita, with some little pops of development that would be in the infill core area of the City of Wichita. Then, in length itself, with all of this information, with all of the modeling, here's the projections. So, on this particular graphic, you're going to see the past enrollments represented by the primary color of red being elementary, blue being middle school, and green being high school. The aggregate purple line is for the combination of those three. As you move to the right, the pastel colors represent what RSP is projecting the enrollment would be at the elementary level, being the pinkish color, middle school being the blue, green being the high school, and again, the purple line being that aggregate. And as I started out, our projections are showing that for the district, the way we're looking at your K12 enrollments, we're going to have fewer students in 23, 24 than we have now. The elementary is really where the greatest portion of decline is going to be. The middle school starts to see an increase and then drops off the last three years. And then, the high school starts to have more students through this projection period. And all of this goes back to those tables where I like to refer to the pig and the snake effect. So, if you imagine that snake swallowing up that pig, and the pig representing your enrollment by grade, some of those larger grades are starting to work their way into the middle school and then into the high school. And so, that's really kind of the baseline of why we're seeing more students, for sure, in the high school over these five years. So, that's the enrollment portion. So, now, we get a quick drink, and I'll go into the building utilization. All right, so one of the great things that your administration and you as a board approved was really looking at a different way in which capacity could be examined for each of your buildings. And really, hats off to you, because this is going to be a tool that will help you understand how you can better utilize the programs, how that will factor into how you improve some of your buildings, how you staff some of your buildings, how you plan for some of the changes that are occurring, because now you know what's happening with your enrollment pertaining to geography, and then how that relates to the magnet programs and so on. And so, with the building utilization, we know that it's ultimately trying to look at the physical areas, so the building space, classroom size, operational elements, so the utilization rates, staffing, class-size ranges, building schedules, and the programmatic areas of how the programs actually work within the spaces that are defined in each of these buildings. So, that's kind of the general components that go into this. I won't read each of these bullet points pertaining to why you do that. You're going to really see that as we get to the next unpackaging of things, of how do you start resolving some of the challenges that may be occurring at some of the buildings? So, some of the definitions that we wanted to leave you with, so that you have an understanding of capacity, so when Joe Public comes up to you and says, what is this functional utilization? Why do you need to understand what the capacity is of any of these buildings? We've given you some of the definitions that you may hear about some of those capacities for a building. We've focused on the last one, which is functional capacity. And I think it's important difference, because it looks at the program type and the requirements that are occurring in these buildings, the building schedule and class utilization. So, for instance, in the middle school, are we teaching six of eight, five of seven? Those things have an impact on how those class spaces are utilized. We look at class-size ranges, and they're different at each of the grades and for some of the different programs, what the staff levels are, what the square footages are as compared to if there were adopted standards for what a class square footage needs to be. And then, we've provided some opportunities where you could look at repurposing some of these spaces. For instance, the easiest way to think about this is, at the elementary level, let's say one of the buildings has three sections of first grade, and you need to add a fourth one, how could we start to look at that building and say, yeah, I know we have these other programs here, but we need to capture the space for that additional section? What could that look like? So, we've tried to provide that in our analysis. We also had some definitions that'll be important when I get to a couple other slides, so you'll want to probably refer back to page 34. It's with the spaces, they're used, and we've categorized them three different ways. So, we have core classrooms, so these are learning spaces, and you know, kind of define it at the elementary level, it's the easiest. This would be like your homeroom. So, you go to first grade, third grade, fifth grade, that's where you start your days at. The elective non-core classrooms would be as they're going out and they're round-robin to, let's say, arts, to gym, to music. We need those spaces, and so, they're in support of the core classrooms. And then, we have other program classroom spaces, and those are places where we can have interventions for additional learning resources for those students. And then, the repurposed classroom, we go into that definition of basically, how can we maybe make the building operate differently under a different condition? So, those are all the different definitions. We did have a process that we went through, and again, kudos to your administrative team. There was a lot of information. We really pushed them in different directions where maybe the information wasn't quite as far as they wanted it, or as complete as they would like to have handed it off to us. But this is a collaborative effort between your team and our team. But we basically received the building floor plans, the master schedules for each of the schools, and then we worked with administration to develop a standardization of the class sizes based on the different programs that would be impacted by those class sizes. From that point, we had our team of educators and myself went and actually toured each of the buildings. And in those building tours, we garnered information about how those spaces were being used, perceptions that the building administrator might have of those spaces, and how maybe things could be improved or other opportunities could occur in each of those buildings to make the experience for not only the students and the teachers, but the parents as they're coming onsite and leaving those sites. You can see the breakdown of how much time we spent with our tours there, but really, the greater bulk of our time, once we got through that component, was verification. So, there was a lot of verification with the building administrators, and then back with district administration to give them a final product of what is the functional capacity for each of these buildings? And so, tonight, our focus is, how does this roll out from the grade-level perspective? So, first, we started with the information of the buildings themselves. And so, we clearly have over 9 million square feet throughout the district of buildings that we assessed. Obviously, this isn't the supply building, that's quite large as well. But you can see the breakdown for elementary, and you're going to notice this through everything that we do. Elementary's always red, middle school's always blue, green is the high school. For the K8 buildings, that's gray, and then for the special programs that have separate buildings, that's the black. So, that all totals up to about 9 million square feet. When we break each of these areas down by whether it's core rooms, elective, or other program space, that's what I'm showing you in these next two slides by each grade level. So, the elementary, the middle school, the K8 buildings, the high school, and then the special programs. And what you can see here, as I go to this next slide, I think this really illustrates the learning environments here in 2020 requires all of these different spaces, and they are in different amounts in each of the buildings based on what type of programs are there. So, if we have, let's say, an autism program or some other special education So if we have, let's say, an autism program, or some other special education program, or a new welcome program, or ELL programs, they all use different types of space. And we've left a lot of the responsibility to those spaces on how they're defined by the building administrator, which has been very helpful in accommodating what those learning experiences are needed in each of those buildings. So again, you can see this breakdown of the core rooms are the blue, the elective classrooms are the orange, and the gray is the other special programming spaces. So then we started digging a little more into some of the data, and this chart's a little more complex. We have two Y axes. So the left-hand Y axis represents enrollment and coincides with the columns or the bars that you see for the breakdown of elementary, middle school, K8, and high school. The right-hand Y axis is coinciding with the capacity for each of those levels. And so what you start to see with this particular graphic is with the enrollments at each of these levels, we have adequate capacity at the district level. When we get to the point of rolling out what this means for buildings, there's, there's different challenges of overutilization or underutilization. But as we further start to look at this and provide you some maybe easier graphics, this particular chart shows you the past enrollments. And this is elementary, K5 enrollments. And then what the K5 functional capacity is total for the district for K5 schools. So we're at a little over 24,000 students that could be served with functional capacity. Now, some of these buildings, because we have preschool, there's other space that we have separate of this that would increase what the capacity is of that building for the preschool program. So I don't want you to think that we've neglected to follow what's happening in these buildings for those one or two rooms typically allocated for each of the elementary buildings. But again, we have adequate capacity. You can see with the declining elementary enrollment, we have a lot more available capacity throughout the district with how the buildings are being utilized. If we use a different incentive, let's say we want to have more counseling space or mental health space, some of this capacity could change based on some of the directives that you, the board, and administration follows up on for each of these buildings. When we look at the K8 buildings, you can see again, we're having the enrollment kind of grow a little bit over these next five years. And the available functional capacity is 2,345. You can see that even when we get out to 23, 24, we're still at about 2,000 students. So available capacity in the K8 buildings through this projection period. When we look at the 6, 8 buildings, again, the same situation where we have 10,893 seats that can be served through functional capacity. And the enrollments increases a little bit and then decreases. Now, one thing that I know my team wants to make you aware of, and I know the administrative team knows this about middle school, when you have different teams that are there, and how we look at capacity, it's a little bit different adding staff to the middle school than it is the elementary because of how you have to form these teams to make everything work with certifications and whatnot. So some of the things that you start to look at with this capacity may be significantly impacted by that component, but then also on decisions of, of having a teaching six of eight, or five of seven. And does everyone understand what I'm talking about with a six of eight or five of seven? So if there's eight periods in the day, are they obligated to teach six of eight, or is it five of eight? That has an impact on what the utilization is of the space that they teach in. Then as we go to the high school, we have a district capacity of 15,195. And you can see with our enrollment, even with the high school enrollment forecasted to increase, we still have available district-wide high school capacity. Again, very different when we start to break this out at a later date by building. The other component that staff wanted me to touch upon is obviously we have magnet programs here, right? And so what we're showing on this slide is the square footage of the buildings that are either identified as magnets or non-magnet programs. The greater share of the square footage is clearly the non-magnets in both the elementary and the middle school areas. And then what we looked at here on this particular graphic, similar to the other one, where we have two Y axes. So the left axis represents the enrollment with those bars. The right axis represents the utilization for each of those components. Again, just trying to showcase that we do have space. So it gets a little bit confusing when we get over to the elementary total, and you see that columns above the capacity. You look to that right-hand side, and you can see that we're, we're probably at about the 90% capacity with, with these numbers. So then this got us to some of the things that are the launching of, with what Susan's going to talk about with the budget, but things for a later date on strategies, your toolbox per se, of how you may have to look at how you make some of the changes with buildings that are either overutilized or buildings that are underutilized. So these are not all encompassing, but they're just some of the things that we were leaving with to that component. With that, my notes page, so it's open for questions.
Well, and before we do that, I think I do want to kind of touch base on a couple of things. First, again, this, this report goes through the 2018, 19 school year. So we are internally in the process of analyzing 2019, 20 data and comparing it to this. They, they left us a great, you know, we have the capacity figures and all those pieces. So we'll be able to do in-depth analysis of that. Another thing that I do, I think we need to consider is with recent changes in the local economy, with, with what's going on with Spirit and some of the other businesses, I think there's a little bit of instability right now within our community, and we don't know what impact that's going to have for us. As well as, as you saw a little bit about the housing development within the district, and our enrollment trends even within those numbers, as we're projecting a drop in, in enrollment for the elementary level, maybe a little bit of an increase at the secondary level, they weren't quite as steep. And so I think there's a little bit of instability there. And then as we look at some of the enrollment initiatives that we began, you know, with the kindergarten, online enrollment, early enrollment, we don't know what impact those are going to have on our total enrollment too. So there are some, some considerations that we need to keep in mind that make this, you know, any sort of future points that we need to consider. We do have all the standard pieces that are there, and so we'll be able to apply them moving forward.
And then I'm going to talk just a little bit about what's next, and then I'll ask board members to chime in for questions. As you can see, we have had a lot of data to digest. And I know some of you over here looking glassy-eyed, but that's exactly what we looked like a couple of months ago. And we know that we have some areas of needs to explore. And we will continue to do a deeper dive with our current year and the data that we have for that. We will analyze some of our program needs, assignments on magnet schools, ELL, and our special ed, our high enrollment. We'll continue to look at school staffing based on the enrollment. And we will begin to work towards beginning with our small adjustments that we'll be making in the spring and moving into some summer work that we'll be working with, with our team. And then some final decisions that we'll be able to make in the fall so that we can bring those recommendations back for the board for consideration. So we'll have a span of time where we'll continue to work internally on those things that have come out of the data that we've collected. And then at some point, we will, in the beginning, early fall or summer, we'll be able to come back with some really strong recommendations or some considerations for the board so that we can begin to allow everyone to have the chance to hear that information and process, make decisions about what needs to happen with our families, our students, and then we can move forward. So now we open it up for any questions that you all may have.
Ben?
As you know, I'm, I'm an engineer by trade, and so I love data. So I'd, I'd be happy to get a copy of that 120-plus slide deck. Just, just whatever you got, I'd, I'd love to, love to see it, so that's all I got.
My goodness, you must have done a great presentation, and I'm not seeing other questions.
I was thinking we should have a transition, maybe Mr. Virus can come and perform while, you know, Susan comes up. Can't resist.
Thank you very much. And, and basically, we will be talking with you way more about this at a later date, so thank you.
Fabian, I want you to know that you've now set the record for the longest slideshow in board history. It used to be 37, I believe.
Not in history, we go back to our old QIS days for that. I think we have like 70-page slide.
In the last six and a half years, you win. Next time, we need popcorn and sodas.